Okay, there's only two things that everyone.
Pretty much.
I don't have my hammer.
It's right up there at you.
Oh, there it is over here. She slipped it in.
Man.
We're gonna call this July 20th Hoover City Council meeting to order and ask Clerk Call the Roll.
Council President Smith?
Here.
Council President, Council Pro Tim Green?
Here.
Council Member Lyda?
Here.
Council Member Middlebrooks?
Here.
Council Member Murphy?
Here.
Council Member Posey?
Here.
Council Member Shaw?
Here.
We have everyone here either in person or via Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you would please handle the invocation and Mr. Posey the pledge. Everyone, please stand.
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you asking for comfort to Council Member Murphy's family through their time of grieving with the loss of his grandmother. May they have peace knowing she is with you. May you also look after the city, our citizens, our businesses, and the people that work in our city and those that visit. May we learn from your son's example to treat others how we would be treated. Let us be an example of goodwill and kindness toward all in the name of your Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Salute and pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The figure of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we come to the approval of minutes. Chairs open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes as presented without reading.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Item six, announcements, reports, guest recognitions, employee recognitions, proclamations. Mayor, do you want to start with Representative Faulkner? All right. Mr. Faulkner. How are you, sir? Welcome to Hoover.
Yes, Members, Mayor, Members of the Council, President of the Council, Smith. I appreciate you putting me on the agenda tonight. It's my privilege to bring a check to give to the city of Hoover for $5,000. I know that's not going to solve all the needs and issues certainly, but I wanted to reach out to the cities that I represent. And in these times, frankly, you can use the money for what you, any public purpose. But, you know, I requested it for either police or fire or COVID relief efforts or whatever the use the city really has. But that's what I requested it for. I just wanted to let you know we were, I was thinking about the city and appreciate all that you guys are doing and dealing with. I know it's a tough time and it's tough for everybody to be making a lot of decisions about this during this pandemic. But I do have a check for $5,000 I wanted to present to the mayor and the council if that, this would be appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Here's our picture taker. Thank you, sir. Other reports, Mr. Mayor?
We appreciate Representative Faulkner. He is a great supporter of our city and we really appreciate how you represent us as well. So, thank you, David. So, we have, each month you get a financial report, kind of a good look at how we're doing in terms of revenue and spending. And I just want to thank each of you on all the hard work that you've done during this COVID crisis that we've all faced. I appreciate all the work that our city employees have done, the staff, in cutting back expenses and just the overall, I think, dedication towards making sure that we have a sound financial ship. And I'm gonna ask Tina to come up. We give you the financials, probably get a, it's probably gonna run about two weeks before we will come in and actually give a report at the council meeting. So, give you an opportunity as well to ask questions. But I'm real pleased with, with our, where we are. I'm very optimistic in terms of where we are. I think we, we plan for around a $15 million worst-case scenario. I don't think we're gonna get there because of all the hard work that you gentlemen did and certainly our employees did and our department had. So, at this time, I'd ask Tina Bolt to come up, our CFO, if she would, and give us a full report and then give you an opportunity to ask any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think you do, you should have gotten a copy of your financials this weekend. I'm just gonna do a brief summary. So, on this page, this basically is your first page of your financials where it breaks down your revenues, expenditures, other sources, and your fund balance. So, as you can see, I'm gonna go ahead and take this off because this is hard to talk. So, you can see we've got columns for your annual budget or for the annual budget, and that is for 12 months, broken down by revenues, expenditures, other sources, uses, and net change in fund balance. There's also a year-to-date projected, which is, this is the ninth month of the fiscal year. So, this is where we are projected, or budget projection for the ninth month. And then you can see our year-to-date column. As you will see, our revenues, based upon our projected, year-to-date projected versus year-to-date actual, total revenues were down 2.7 million. Expenditures actually are favorable of 7.8 million than other sources and uses. This is transfers out and rebates. This is favorable $1 million. So, this gives a net change, a favorable balance of 6.1 million. So, as you can see, even though our revenues are down, the cost savings measures that we have put into place have actually worked and we have, that has really offset that difference. So, with our fund balance, what we have projected at the end of the year was 37 million. As you can see across the board, the fund balance beginning of year is 32.7. That's what we ended 2019 with and started 2020 with. So, the fund balance for the end of the year is favorable, the 6.1 million, as shown by your net change in fund balance. Now, if you will notice on our year-to-date actual, right now it is 17.7 million. As we've talked several times about how revenues are collected early in the year, you know, we still have, you know, three more months left to live off of these revenues. And then there's also some adjustments made at year-end for accruals and that sort of thing. The next page just breaks down the general fund revenues for June. So, total sales and use tax is where we see our biggest unfavorable balance, which is what we expected because a tax, sales tax comprises two-thirds of our, of all of our revenues. So, that is unfavorable of $2 million. Other taxes, this basically is just broken out on your second page of your financials and I just comprised some categories. So, it's property tax, franchise tax, rental tax. It is an unfavorable balance of 278,000. Total licenses and permits is actually favorable, 503,000. Intergovernmental is basically federal pass-through. That's like the detainee when we get reimbursed for the detainees. That is negative or unfavorable 1 million, I mean 1,000, sorry. And then total fines and forfeitures are, is also unfavorable, 151,000. Interest, we are actually doing pretty good on interest, but again, we do mark to market. So, that could change before the year, the end of the year, but it is favorable 304,000 at this point. Other revenues, that's rents, contributions, reimbursements. That's another category I just combined from that financial page, is unfavorable 1 million. So, this gives the grand total unfavorable of its 2.7, which matches back to that first page of what your total revenues, the unfavorable balance is. And let me reiterate again, with your revenues, a lot of those are collected at the beginning of the year. So, just breaking down what the sales tax, which is again, comprises two-thirds of our revenues, general sales tax is just tax, if those of you, I'm sure you guys may know, but not everybody may know, taxes on goods and services purchased by consumers. It is the difference, and what I've compared here is last June, June 2019 to June 2020, and what the difference is. So, the difference from last June to this June, a year ago, is 1.7 million. Casual sales tax is taxes on autos, boats, trailers, manufactured homes by those that aren't normally engaged in selling these types of items. And so, that is from last June to this June is an unfavorable balance of 43,000. Seller's use tax is tax on personal properties sold by businesses who have no inventory locally. That is a favorable balance of 457,000. Consumer use tax is tax on tangible personal property brought into our area for consumption. That is an unfavorable balance from last June to this June of 183,000. SSUT is basically tax for online sales, which we expected to see a large increase from last year to this year because again, with COVID, everybody was ordering online. You may have heard there's, you know, a lot of the CFOs in the state are trying to push for some changes to that legislation. And so, we're working on that collectively, but you do see a favorable balance of 1.2 million, which basically with those revenues offsets all that negative that we had in general sales tax to give us only a negative at this point of $284,000. Any questions?
President, I have one.
Yes, sir.
So, back in March, we were actually ahead of the curve on overall revenues and sales tax. About what was that figure that we were ahead, if I recall correctly, if I'm wrong, then?
In March?
Before everything started.
I will get that to you. I do not remember that number right off the top of my head.
I guess what I'm interested in is, we see we're behind on year-over-year, but we were actually ahead year-over-year at one point. So, the total impact would be those two numbers added together to kind of know what we, what we dialed back from.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Ms. Bolt, on the year-to-date projected total revenues, we have a new revenue officer now. Are these numbers, his numbers, or they Mr. Lopez's numbers?
I'm sorry, would you say that one more time? On the year-to-date projected?
Year-to-date projected 105 million?
Yes, sir.
Are those our new revenue officer's numbers or those Mr. Lopez's numbers?
Those are what was projected in the budget as of nine months.
Okay, so, pre-COVID.
Yes, sir. So, what's year-to-date actual, the 102 is actually where we're, what we've actually collected. So, the 105 is what was budgeted based upon nine months of revenue collections.
Is there a year-to-date projected based on our COVID losses?
I don't have that from Mr. Lopez at this time.
From, oh, Mr. Lopez is still with us?
I thought you said mister. I said mister.
No, I was meaning Mr. Lopez is still, I thought he retired the end of the month.
Mr. Lopez is on the books until the end of this month, I think.
Yeah.
And we do not have a month-to-month breakdown, Mr. President, on the COVID numbers. It was the eight to $15 million range for the year-end.
These are burning time for most part.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions from his boat?
Mr. President, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Looking at percentages, I know we were down 53% for the April numbers. Do we have a percentage on how much we were down in May?
For the?
Compared to, compared, so a percentage compared to what we, what we were supposed to, what we would have brought in compared to what we did brought in, is there a percentage on that?
For the revenues?
Yes.
I don't have the percentage right offhand.
I did, I meant to calculate it and I just want to see if you had it. It's okay, I can calculate it later. Because it looks like it is a little bit better than the 53% that we had, our revenue in April. So, we're trending up. I just wonder how much we trended up, look at a forecast going forward.
Yes.
And do you see, looking at next year, do you see this, this 2 million unfavorable staying that way and us budgeting that way for next year? That we would have a $2 million deficit? We'd be 2 million less in our revenue throughout the entire year? Or would you scale that? Have you even looked at it yet?
Actually, we have not looked at that. We are actually working on the budget right now and are expecting revenue projections from the revenue department.
Good deal.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other? I've got a question. I've had a couple of employees come to me since Thursday. Are there any plans to change the benefits program for the city employees?
Which benefits are you referring to?
Insurance.
The plans for that would come from the adopted budget by the council. We have asked our insurance consultant to bring back a menu of options, what the economic impact of each one of those options would be. But the benefits would only be changed based on what the council adopts in the FY21 budget.
But nothing having to do with family coverage?
There'll be a menu provided to us that we'll provide to you in our budget conversations and then that'll be some of what this body has to determine.
Thank you. Anything else from the report section? Hearing none. We're gonna turn now to our consent agenda, items seven through 13. Mr. Corley, if you would handle the legal aspects.
Yes, sir. Item seven is the payment of bills. Item eight is Resolution Number 67, 627720, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a COVID-19 CARES Act sub-grant agreement with Jefferson County, Alabama. Resolution Number 628020 authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Jefferson County, Alabama for a community grant program for operation of the Hoover Senior Center. Resolution Number 628220 allows the mayor to fill current employee position vacancies listed in the resolution. Resolution 628320 appoints the municipal clerk to perform all duties of the mayor's required by the Code of Alabama for the August 25, 2020 municipal election, as the mayor has qualified as a candidate therein, and if necessary, the October 6, 2020 municipal runoff election. Resolution 628420 authorizes the mayor to execute an option to purchase agreement with G.B. Vincent and substantially the form attached to exhibit A to the resolution, as well as any other documents necessary to effectuate the agreement. Resolution 628520 changes the date of the September 7, 2020 city council meeting to September 8, 2020 due to the Labor Day holiday.
Chair's open for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This being a consent agenda, it's non-debatable unless a member would like to have something removed and placed on the regular agenda. I think we dealt with those Thursday. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Now, we're gonna move on to our regular agenda, Resolution 628620, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a termination of investment management agreement with EAM and an investment advisory agreement with Raymond James and Associates and other documents related thereto.
President, I move for approval of Resolution Number 628620.
Second.
No motion and a second. Any information need to be brought forward? Ben?
Yes, based on our discussions at Thursday's work session and follow-up with, with our legal counsel thereafter, I'd request that you amend the proposed resolution by requiring language in the agreement that allows for immediate termination of the agreement upon written notice to, from one party to another. And that way, we will have maximum flexibility with this agreement to exit, terminate the agreement at any point in time.
Mr. Powell has requested that the resolution be amended. Do we have a motion to amend the resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. I move to amend the resolution to include the verbiage as described by Mr. Powell.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Now, we're gonna go back and we're probably gonna need a new motion based on passage of the resolution as amended.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the resolution as amended.
Second.
No motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next is Resolution 628420, Mr. Corley.
Resolution 628120.
Wait a minute. I'm looking at the wrong one.
Item number 16.
I think we got 70.
Yeah, no.
No, I'm sorry.
It's 628120.
Okay. Resolution 628120 authorizes the Birmingham Water Works to install a fire hydrant at 200 Inverness Center Drive.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution 628120.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Murphy, would you care to abstain?
Yes, sir. I'll be abstaining from this.
Mr. Murphy abstains from comments in the vote. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution 627220, Mr. Corley.
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing and this resolution declares that a public nuisance exists on the properties listed in the resolution due to the overabundance of grass and/or weeds present thereon and orders the abatement thereof.
First, we're gonna have a public hearing. Mr. Mack, is there anything you'd like to say for the public hearing?
Yes, sir. We have seven properties that are up for abatement tonight and they've, this is the second hearing on all seven. And if you want me to list them out, since the 3419 Lockridge Drive, 1858 Burning Tree Circle, 905 Shady Brook Circle, 2125 Taylor Lane, 1139 Camelot Circle, 1776 South Point Drive, and 3555 Adoan Drive. And?
About 1,200 Shades Crest.
1,200 Shades Crest was cut prior to the meeting and has been removed.
Thank you.
And so, that leaves seven for tonight and all the properties are vacant. They've, the photos y'all have were all taken today, even after lunch. So, do you have any questions about any of those?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone to speak for or against these properties? Anything from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Mack, are any of these in foreclosure that you're aware of?
There's some that appear to be in there, just judging by the property owner. A couple, you know, a few of them are out of state and appear to be in foreclosure.
Thank you.
All right, this is gonna end the public hearing. And we've already had the legal statements, so open for a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of Resolution Number 627220.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Once again, any comments or questions from the council, from the audience? Seeing, hearing, none. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinance 20-2484.
President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 202484.
Second.
Motion and a second, Mr. Corley.
This is a second reading. This ordinance amends Chapter 11, Article 7, Section 11-153 of the Municipal Code of the City of Hoover, related to the reduction, control, and prevention of noise.
Any comments or questions from the council? This is something that I first initiated when we passed the special event ordinance that allowed for business properties to be able to have music across parking lots and things like that. So, we needed to come and provide an exemption for those here. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Madam Clerk, please tell the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyda?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. Ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 20-2485, Mr. Corley.
This is a second reading and this ordinance modifies Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, to establish regulations for entertainment districts within the city of Hoover and to establish the Stadium Trace Village Entertainment District.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 202485.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Green?
I would like to comment on this ordinance. As my fellow council members know, I have previously voiced my concerns about this project, mainly because of the open container provision. I believe it sets the wrong tone for our city and could too easily allow underage drinking. But I am not alone in voicing my concerns. I have been contacted by many citizens who are also opposed. No citizens have contacted me in favor of this ordinance. There are three primary objections I keep hearing about. First, an open container policy creates serious potential for teenagers to have easier access to alcohol. With Hoover High School in such close proximity and having so many after-school events, teenagers are much more likely to have access to the entertainment district and alcohol. Another objection is that the district will be too near neighborhoods, churches, schools, and childcare centers, and it is not compatible with the area because of this proximity. The other primary objection I have been given is that the Stadium Trace Village is a family-oriented shopping center designed to meet the needs of people living in that area. It is not designed for nor appropriate for the more adult-oriented atmosphere of an entertainment center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to, I'd like to make a statement on behalf of the Arts Council. We reviewed this project a couple, a couple of times over the last month and the Arts Council absolutely loves the amenity that would be going there, the amphitheater, the, given the success that we've had at the Met with, with Black Jacket Symphony in the drive-in arena, we think that this would be fantastic to have, a fantastic amenity for the arts within the city and to bring art into the city. In fact, we've had conversations with, with Mr. Lynch about helping with the art and helping facilitate some art pieces in the area. So, this is a great thing for the Arts Council and we absolutely love it.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a statement as well. Just like to say, entertainment district can help spur economic development or in some cases redevelopment. And it, this, in this case, it will help bolster Hoover's live, work, play image and, as Councilman Posey says, cultural activities within our city that many of our citizens have been asking for, for a long time. I will add to remark on Councilman Green's objection. It is gonna take individual responsibility to act appropriately, to drink appropriately, and conduct oneself appropriately in these districts. We will be watching it closely and if any crime gets out of hand, we've made sure that the council can rescind this entertainment district at any time. So, I think it'll be a good thing. And I'm, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you please come up and give us your name, the street you live on, the city you live in, and your zip code. We're changing things up a little bit so we don't tell the world exactly where you live.
My name is Nancy Carr. I live in Hoover in Stadium Trace, 35244.
Thank you.
I have sent an email to everyone in the council expressing my concerns about having an open container law. I agree with if the amphitheater will bring the appropriate? I agree with if the amphitheater will bring the appropriate type of entertainment that we would like in Hoover. I think that's a totally different subject than to have an open container law. The article that was published in the Hoover Sun said that we were looking for a New Orleans-type atmosphere in Hoover. And the many, many times I've been to New Orleans, I have walked to my hotel condo, taken a cab, Uber, but not gotten in my car and driven away from walking around with an open container. We have four schools, three churches, within three blocks of that area. The atmosphere at the Finley Center and what you've done with the Hoover Met was all done to be a family environment. Those games go on until late at night, the volleyball, the basketball, even the outdoor sports. And I think it would be tragic for those children to be coming out of those games, those family environments, and meet oncoming traffic from people leaving or participating in an open container environment. I think it's dangerous. I think we've had too many problems at the Galleria recently to encourage 21-year-olds that can come up to Hoover and walk around and drink. The fact that they're gonna have solo cups with an insignia on it, in this day and age, you can order those online and make your own, there will be, it will be very difficult to monitor, to maintain, and to keep the appropriate amount of security. Someone posted online that the reason this was being done is that it was a done deal with the bid to keep the SEC baseball tournament. And I hope that that is not true, that we are not selling Hoover out and bringing risk and security issues to a neighborhood environment after spending millions of dollars to make sure that the area is family-oriented.
Ms. Carr, I can tell you that personally I have not had any conversations where the SEC was even mentioned.
That's you. What about everybody else?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No.
Mr. President, I have probably the most contact with the SEC officials, and this subject has never been the subject of conversation with them.
Thank you.
Well, again, I don't think that it is a safe and welcoming environment to have people outside walking around that can hand drinks off to teenagers and others that are gonna get in cars and drive. And I think it's very poor judgment if we decide to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else here in the audience care to speak?
Council President Smith. We also had one letter of opposition.
Have a letter of opposition? All right, very good. Yes, ma'am. Or Mr. Wade Morgan. Morgan Wade. Wade Morgan.
Wade Morgan. I live on Sawyer Drive in Hoover, 35226. I wanna echo some of the concerns from the previous--
Him, 'cause he's not touching anything.
I wanted to echo some concerns from the previous resident. I think the city has invested an incredible amount of money, time, and effort into having the Met area for youth sports, for competitions, for events that are supposedly to bring in families in that type of an environment. I eat at a lot of the restaurants up there and shop up there. It's very family-friendly. You know, most of y'all know I've worked in law enforcement for 25 years. I see nothing good coming from this ordinance from the law enforcement perspective. I worked night shift when most bars would close. It'll be near to impossible to enforce people to stay within the zone. Keeping minors from having alcohol will be problematic. And where you have a bar and servers that can attempt to call a cab or a rideshare for someone who's had too much to drink, if you're in an entertainment zone, it's easy to slip into your car with your drink in your hand and leave, and that puts everybody else's lives at risk unnecessarily for the sake of a few dollars. And I think it's shameful that we're even considering this ordinance. Thank you.
As Dr. Middlebrooks pointed out, this can be overturned just as quick as it may pass, may not pass, really can't say. I think that if we found that just a little bit of a problem started to exist, this council or the next council, it'll be the next council before it even opens. But I truly believe that at that point, at that point, the council will be quick to handle any issues. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. President, before she speaks, just following on your statement, there's not always a second chance. The council may not have a chance to, may have a chance now to prevent something that could be tragic, rather than going back and trying to prevent anything further tragically happen.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I agree with the--
Your name?
Susan Atwood. And I live in Trace Crossings.
Okay.
And I've lived there for 10 years, and--
35--
35244.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add to what has been said so far. Are we now providing another hangout for an element that we saw at the Galleria? I think we are. I think you're absolutely wrong in bringing open container to the city of Hoover. It is a family atmosphere. I live close to the Finley Center, and I love all the activities that are there. But they're family. It's a family of, the entire area there is family-oriented, and I just feel so badly that I have to be here and talk against something in Hoover once again. I understand that you'll shut this down, but there's a restaurant up there that has not complied with any of the COVID rules the day they opened, and it's still open. I can honestly say that it takes time to close down something like that, and I think the city of Hoover already has a mark on its reputation. My children that live in Homewood have now said, "I cannot take my granddaughter to the mall to ride the carousel anymore." They weren't impressed with this open container issue. And I just feel that, as a grandparent and a parent, that this is the worst idea you all have come up with. I've lived in Hoover for many, many years, and I have voted for most of you, but I'm telling you, this is a bad idea. I can tell you I'm on the board of the SVC Symphony, and this does not go along with that idea, to have open containers. So shame on you if you vote for this. I'm just appalled. The other communities, Vestavia, Mountain Brook, Homewood, do you think they would consider this for their community?
Vestavia has one with the ability to do two more.
Well, maybe so. But I'm just telling you, I know how this city has run, and if you can't take care of that restaurant up there for avoiding all the guidelines of COVID, I don't trust you to do the same at the amphitheater.
Mr. President, if I may--
Doctor?
Ma'am, in regards to COVID measures, that's the duty or duty of the Jefferson County Health Department. I would recommend calling them and voice your concerns to them. Really, I think some of us are, have the wrong image of what this possibly could be. Number one, this village doesn't have any type of nightclub in it, which tends to draw the younger crowd. It may not have the wisdom to conduct themselves properly when drinking. These are, we're talking about amphitheater, we're talking about bringing more cultural events, more of the arts and so forth, more of the family-friendly type events. The New Orleans-style nightclub scene, I don't think you're gonna see in this particular district because it's simply not there. It doesn't, not conducive to that atmosphere.
Mr. President--
Yes.
Go ahead. Dr. Middlebrooks interrupted you.
Go ahead.
I'm done.
As far as conducive to the atmosphere, I'm not sure exactly what Big Whiskey is, but it's right in front of that district. And with a name like Big Whiskey, it certainly implies that there will be alcohol, so to speak, in that area.
Mr. Schultz, did I see your hand up? And then I think I saw at least one person online that wants to speak to this subject. If you would verify.
No.
Okay.
My name is Robin Schultz, Albemarle Drive, 35226 in Hoover. I think one of the things that we're focusing on here tremendously is just one item of the big picture, and that's where perhaps the presentation lacks a little bit. I've had the ability to see the entire plan, not only the present one, but the future one, and it's not isolated to just an open container law. It is something that's gonna be incredibly beneficial for the city of Hoover, especially from a revenue standpoint. Right now, we're in a position where every type of revenue is important, and hospitality industry is what is incredibly important for us right now, especially in that area. And we're going to have a lot more restaurants and a lot more venues over there, not just restaurants that cater to alcohol, but food as well. Majority of the restaurants in that new shopping plaza are food, not alcohol. As a matter of fact, there is no alcohol-only restaurant there, although the name does imply it, it is not a bar-only, it's a restaurant as well. Every restaurant there is doing phenomenally well right now. Every restaurant there, it caters to a family atmosphere, and it's just the tip of the iceberg. So we need to look at the big picture of what this particular venue is going to bring, not just one particular item, and I do hope that you vote in favor of this. And as Dr. Middlebrooks said, it's an issue of responsibility. Regarding the New Orleans issue, I've been to New Orleans several times because my daughter attended school there, and the one thing that has changed dramatically in New Orleans in the last five years is something that we have here as well, and that's Uber. We don't have to use our own personal vehicles anymore. We can pick up the phone, and we have a ride in no time flat. So that's another thing that should be taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's also my understanding, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but any laws that are available in the district will be aggressively enforced, whether it be private security or police officers hired to work off-duty. And that is what we're looking for, is if somebody, if somebody comes in there and does the wrong thing, then our plan is to catch them. And if we don't catch them and we get too many reports, then whoever is sitting in seats similar to these, hopefully not these, because these are rough, then there are actions that can be taken by the city. Mr. Lynch, is there anything you'd like to respond to?
I wasn't gonna respond tonight because I've been to the mic several times on this issue, but these people have a tremendous investment in their bricks and mortar. They are not gonna let the bad element be there. They got a business to protect, and they're gonna self-police. And if there's issues, the city of Hoover doesn't have to shut them down, they'll shut themselves down.
A quick question that I've just thought of. The original agreement on taxation and the return of certain numbers of funds, will the district monies be included in that?
I don't, I really don't know the answer. I'd hate to respond to that, but I don't, I don't know how that works.
Mr. President, that agreement is predicated on all sales tax generated at the development.
And this would be considered a part of the development?
It's my understanding this would just be--
It is part of the development.
That's my understanding.
Very good.
Corley, unless you have anything different?
Very good. Thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Several people have said open container, and open container kinda creates the image in people's mind that we're gonna have beer bottles and solo cups and people doing, it is designated, and this is the only one designated that I know of, that will only use logo cups from the establishment. And once they take it from the establishment, they can't take it back into another establishment. I was up there the other night, and one of the restaurants, the one I was in was complaining, had 50% capacity, it was on a wait, and so people either stay there and decide they're gonna, they're gonna wait, or they're gonna go somewhere else. If they can have a beverage and just walk around until they're called to their seat, I think it would drive the economy.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So I'm all for diversifying our economy. However, I'm a proponent of always action the expert, the thought pattern on, when we talk about crime and just the logistics of certain things, is Chief Dursis been consulted with or given his opinion on this item and ways to logistically handle issues that arrive? I mean, he's been on this quite some time. I just wanna know that piece of it.
Mr. President, if I could, Chief Dursis has been in the conversation. I certainly don't wanna put any words in his mouth. If it's acceptable, I can try to get him by phone, and I come to the podium, and we can have dialogue, you can have dialogue with him directly.
Is there anyone from the Police Department on the call, online?
Mr. President, this is John Leida. I'd call the question.
Yes, sir.
I'd call the question. Ask for a vote.
All right. Call for the question. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Is this, I'm sorry, is this a motion to call the question and end debate and discussion?
He's made, he's called for the question.
Second and a vote, right?
That vote requires a supermajority to end debate, so that'd be--
All right.
First, we need to vote to call the question.
So we'll need a second, and we will need five votes in the affirmative to end discussion. I'll second it. Got a motion and a second. There is no debate on this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Leida?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Nay.
Mr. Murphy?
Nay.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay. So discussion is still available.
Yeah, so again, I would love to have our police chief to, or representative, to give me some, just some understanding of everything. I think we owe it to the expert that monitors the, our 45-square area, square-mile city.
Mr. Rice is currently working on getting with the chief. I'm sorry? We get, seems we got a few minutes, go ahead. Normally, you only get one bite at the apple from the audience, but.
I understand, I appreciate it.
But we got, we got a little time.
I welcome Mr. Morgan's comments, he's.
I just wanted to comment that, that your comment about young people being irresponsible and older people being more wise is way off-base when it comes to alcohol. Anybody in law enforcement will tell you drunk is a drunk, and just because you're older, most of my DUIs were older adults, 40s, 50s, even 60s. The kids usually get people to drive them, drive them around, but the adults think that I can have four or five drinks and I can drive just as good as I could before. And again, I just think it's a horrible idea.
Mr. Rice? Thank you, sir.
Answer any questions you might have.
I'm sorry?
Chief is on speaker, he's available to answer any questions you might have.
I guess, does the police department take a position on, like they would when it comes to issuing an alcohol license? They take positions, what is the police department's position on this entertainment district?
Did you hear the question?
I did not.
Okay, so the question for Mr. Smith is, does the police department have a position on the approval of the entertainment district, much like you take positions on issuance of alcohol licenses?
Well, to be perfectly candid, we know, we've learned a little bit about it, but I don't know of all the, all the plans. Obviously, there are entertainment districts all over the country that are very popular and are done correctly. Before I could make that comment, I would have to know exactly, you know, our underage drinking, of course, would be the major challenge, and I'd want to make sure what type of restrictions are there to satisfy us, that that would be very, very hard to do. But again, I'm certainly open to the entertainment district concept, because again, I know that it's very popular in a lot of areas, it's an economic boom for some areas that have it. So again, I would just want some more information before I make that comment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Murphy?
I would, I would recommend that, just allowing our chief to dive into the weeds on this, and for me, at least give me a confident recommendation from him and his staff prior to making a decision on it.
To me, it's unfortunate that he wasn't asked the question before tonight, and I don't know that that's on this body.
So the chief, the chief was not consulted?
Apparently not.
Say it again now.
Apparently not. At this point, I would think that it would be prudent to change the motion to continue to the next regular meeting, if the body so wills.
Mr. President, I made the motion, I, I mean, we've been through this for several weeks, and we've had plenty of chance to ask the questions. To me, this is pretty straightforward, we're, it's an entertainment district as defined by state law, other cities have them, and I'm not willing to modify my motion. If somebody else wants to make the motion to continue to the next meeting, that's fine, I just don't see the point. I think we've reviewed this as a body enough. And I understand, I understand the concerns and something we've looked at, and if we recall back several years ago, when we talked about the trace crossings rezoning, there was concern about that area right across the street from the Finley Center having an entertainment district. And so the plan was altered, and this is out on the main road, as many people asked to have this type of thing if it occurred out on the main road, and that's what we've done, so this is what we have. Like I said, I don't, I think we know enough to vote on this, and I'm ready to vote. I don't know what other information we could have that would change a A to an A or vice versa, given the way it's defined in state law.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, one more from the audience.
Somebody else, yes ma'am. I guess you get a second bite because Mr. Morgan did.
I would like to say that I think hearing from the police chief and what plans would be for security, when all of our concerns, including a retired policeman, are about security, I think hearing from him and what type of resources are going to be required from this city to support this effort, do those resources negate all of the money that's going to be made from the income, not to mention the risk of the lives that could be lost? And I would like to hear from the police chief. And the fact that nobody has even engaged him in this conversation, I think is remiss. So if there's a chance to wait and at least let the public hear something solid, and there's a big difference from the arts and an amphitheater that is going to invite a lot of young people and people that are allowed to take their drinks and walk around from car to car, and it doesn't take very long to collect a few cups. I've been young once before.
Would you have the same opinion if this was on 280 and not near your house?
I'm sorry?
Would you have the same opinion if this was on Highway 280 and not near to your home?
I would have the same opinion if we were going to give kids an opportunity to have a walk-around with an open container of alcohol anywhere in this state. And I know, I know it's done in other places, and I know that it's an, it's an opportunity, but we are, the area that you're putting this in, the restaurants that have opened there already are, are nice, it is a family atmosphere for the most part, but once you start changing to add this element, it's going to change quickly, and there may not be bars up there now, but once this passes, it'll be very inviting, and it could change very quickly. And I think your opportunity to undo and try to put the genie back in the bottle is likely not to happen. So, you know, security is a, is an issue, and if that has not been negotiated with the police department, what are we, what, what is it going to take for them to monitor and to keep that place safe?
Mr. President, I'm a little, I seem to recall in the last meeting when we discussed it, the first reading, the police chief was here. Didn't we at that point ask if there was any, any input, because this is the second reading?
Yes, and Mr. President, I would like to add that we certainly have a great police chief and great police department, but this is also a new area for them. There's been no entertainment district in Hoover until this point that they can draw an experience from.
I would say, like Councilman Shaw was saying, this is the second reading, if this was a major concern from the police department, I believe we would have heard something by now. The fact that he hasn't, or anyone from there hasn't voiced a concern speaks to your point.
You have a retired policeman right here that has voiced his concern, and I think it would be an opportunity for the police to tell us one way or the other. Has anybody been employed by them? Is there going to be additional security from the property owners up there?
Well, I can agree about the fact that we have a retired law enforcement officer here, but he is not set to make or enforce policy in Hoover. He's a citizen with an opinion just like.
That's why we're asking you to at least let us hear from the police chief.
Well, I'm going to tell everybody what my plans are. I'm going to vote with the majority, however that goes. By doing that, at the next meeting, it is my intent to hand the gavel to Mr. Green and call this back up to be discussed again, and it could be voted down at that time. I'm hoping that in that two-week period, the police department will give us a yes or a no.
But if you're voting on it tonight, won't that approve it? And why would you vote with the majority and not your conscience?
That may be my conscience, Ms. Corley.
Well, maybe, and yes or no are two different things.
But it also, it also gives us another bite at the apple, so to speak, and we, we can reverse, but it can only happen at the next meeting to ask for reconsideration. But it has to be someone having voted with the majority that can make such a request. So if I vote no and it passes, I cannot ask for reconsideration.
Mr. President, have we ever done this before? I can't recall in my almost 12 years.
We, we have.
But we voted on something one time only to be, to aim to bring it up the next time, to rescind it.
We have, we have had issues. If you want specifics, it would probably take me a while to go and find them, but I do know that we've had issues since during my time sitting in our seats, that we have brought issues up for reconsideration. It doesn't happen often, there's probably only two or three at best in all these years.
Mr. President, I want to ask you a question that was asked in the chat. Who's responsible for researching this before it gets onto a, a agenda?
Well, it still has to go before. Well, instead of me answering, Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir.
Who all, if this passes tonight, who all gets to look at this going forward as construction were to take place?
Who looked at it beforehand, before you put it on agenda, who reviewed all this and said, this is good to go put on the agenda?
Well, that would, that would be the council. We helped, helped to draft the ordinance, but I'm assuming that Mr. Smith set the agenda and added to the agenda, if that's the question.
So you didn't, there was no, there was nothing in your opinion in drafting it that kept it from being heard?
No, no, I think that, I mean, the ordinance itself sets out the parameters of, you know, what would be permitted and how alcohol would be consumed. As far as some of the comments, you know, alcohol is not permitted in the parking areas or in cars, minors are not allowed to drink or have open containers.
And does it address how that will be enforced?
Well, I mean, it would be enforced by the police and by the establishments.
And that's what I'm asking, is who has employed or who is responsible or employing the security or the police? And is there a minimum, a maximum? How are you going to keep kids from going to their cars with drink?
Those are good questions. That would be for the establishments and, you know, private security and the police to enforce, just like they do now with other restaurants.
And there have been nightclubs in the history of this city. There was a country nightclub, there was VIP 2001 before Disco Dug.
Can I get to a second reading and then go back and look at this stuff again when we've already looked at it?
I guess part of the question is, what other steps has to be looked at, whether it be by this body or planning and zoning, going forward after tonight, should this pass?
I mean, there's, if you pass it, as you said, it would be approved tonight, you could bring, you can bring it up on reconsideration at the next meeting, as you described.
Right.
But that's not guaranteed that you would bring it up for reconsideration.
If I die between now and the next meeting, which probably makes some people very happy, I plan to bring it up for reconsideration if the police department takes a negative And they're going to have to be vocal in taking that position.
So the only thing that would make you reconsider it is if the police department brought up a negative?
If they, if they don't have any problems, then I don't see the need, because that's what we're talking about right now, is what their concerns are. If they don't have any concerns, then it doesn't need to be brought up again.
Mr. President, applicant would like to speak, sir. Mr. Lynch would like to speak.
Mr. Lynch?
I'd ask the body to bring the issue up and then let the chief set the rules for this entertainment district. And I'd put it in his hands. I trust whatever the chief wants to do as far as rules and regulations, and I don't know if that's proper or not, but we've, we've been at this three or four weeks, we've had a first reading, the second reading, the chief was here the first time. No, I did not sit down with the chief and lay it out, but I, I trust the chief to lay out any rules and regulations that he wants to put in place.
Any other discussion? Is anybody online that wants to speak to this?
It doesn't look like it.
John?
I think they're trying to get him unmuted.
Oh, is Mr. Leida been kicked off?
No, I just keep having trouble, I keep getting muted somehow, I don't know why.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything bad, I'm ready to vote. I wish we could vote tonight. As Mr. Shaw is saying, I think Mr. Posey's saying, we've gone through this four weeks, and I don't know the attendance record, but I think everyone in this body has been at these meetings, so I'm kind of curious why these questions are just coming up now, and I'd prefer for us to get a vote tonight.
Well, Mr. Leida, my big concern is the police department saying that they haven't been approached about any of this, and that, that brings heartburn on the side of staff. So, that being said, any other comments from the council? Any other from the audience? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Nay.
Mr. Leida?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain. Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next, we have, that's the last of our regular agenda, now we have first, first readings to receive action at our next meeting, I believe. Mr. Corley, ordinance 20-2486.
This ordinance levies the municipal taxes for the city of Hoover beginning on and after the first day of October 2020.
Anybody here from revenue that would like to speak to? Anybody here from Revenue that would like to speak to? Is Bolt gone?
Mr. Smith, I understand this is just the routine.
I know this is done annually, but for those that have not heard it before, is there anybody here to speak to this from staff? Why this needs to be done?
This is the annual tax levy for Shelby County and Jefferson County.
Okay, what kind of tax?
Probably.
No, it can't be property tax. It requires a vote of the people.
I'll pull this up.
Mr. Corley, what kind of taxes?
The municipal sales taxes.
I'm sorry, sir?
Municipal sales and.
Municipal sales and use tax. Okay, anything else? SSUT?
Ms. Smith, this is the typical annual declaration on the part of the council notifying the taxing authorities in the two counties to please collect these on behalf of the municipality. And I think whereas SSUT is collected directly by the State Department of Revenue, it probably is not included.
Okay.
And this will go to the tax assessors and tax collectors of Jefferson County and Shelby County, Alabama?
Maybe, maybe we can have a little more information for the second reading. Next, ordinance 20-2487, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends the Hoover Municipal Code to change the locations of certain public meetings of various city bodies as set forth in the ordinance, effective on September 1st, 2020.
What this is going to do is, all the meetings that have been held either here or at Spain Park High School, we're finally going home. Remodeling will be done by the 1st of September, and we will be able to start conducting our meetings there again. The second reading will be at our next regular meeting. Any comments or questions from the council first?
Mr. President, I've got one. Mr. Rice, is there, is there an opportunity to have, I know you had an initial round of conversations with Brookfield. Is there, is there an ability to have more conversations with them about a few things? Maybe tweaking a few things, looking at a couple of options?
In reference to?
The Galleria, the security.
The security, absolutely. That's an ongoing conversation that's evolving primarily between the police chief and the local mall management, but also involving their regional security people.
Okay.
So if you have any specifics, feel free to let me know or contact the chief directly.
I will.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Anyone here in attendance? All right, for those that want to speak online, we've been, if you were listening on Thursday, we talked about adjusting to a new way of handling things. And one of the things we talked about was two minutes with, with the extension possibilities. And after consulting legal, what I'm going to have tonight is three minutes. We have three minutes on the clock. When you get down to 30 seconds, you'll hear a computer voice identifying you've got 30 seconds left. At that time, you need to start winding it up. If you become profane at any time, you will be disconnected. If you start yelling at any time, you will be disconnected. So, that being said, we're going to start with Hoover residents, Hoover business owners, and then those that live outside the city. So we're going to start with, I hope I do this right, Shilpa Gagar?
Yes, thank you.
All right, your three minutes have started.
All right, I am here today, reading as requested, a letter to the editor that was published on June 11, and then delivered in email format on July 5 of 2020. Dear Editor, the murder of George Floyd has once again highlighted the stark reality of inequities and discrimination faced by people of color in communities across the United States. Citizens and protesters across the country and in our own community are calling for governments and police forces to commit to immediate and transformative changes to our police and local governments. In Hoover, this is not the first time that issues of racism and racial inequities have been raised. Almost two years ago, the killing of E.J. Bradford led to ongoing protests and calls for the city to take action to promote equity and inclusion for people of color. Groups of citizens repeatedly met with city officials and called upon them to institute changes in policy, education and training, and data sharing. In addition to these efforts, community-based educational initiatives led by grassroots organizations like Hoover Ahead have facilitated conversations among Hoover residents about how we can make our community more welcoming to people of color. These discussions and recent events have brought us to a tipping point, and we are calling for the city to move beyond the discussion phase to institute transformative and sustainable changes to city government and administration designed to promote equity and inclusion for all citizens in our diverse city. We, the undersigned residents, workers, and business owners of Hoover, Alabama, are publicly, publicly calling upon city leadership to immediately begin implementation of the action items below. One, create a centralized public website that summarizes available data from the last five years in relation to issues of diversity and inclusion, including but not limited to traffic stops, tickets, arrests, school discipline, educational outcomes, city employment information, and city contract awards by race, ethnicity, and gender. Two, hire a chief diversity officer for the city of Hoover tasked with overseeing data requests, updates, implementation of citizen and city employee climate assessments, review of city, current city policies, and comparison with best practices related to equity and inclusion, and liaising with citizen groups and advisory boards. Three, create an equity inclusion advisory board of racially and ethnically diverse citizens who will work with the chief diversity officer, mayor, city council, and Hoover City Schools Administration and Board to recommend data-driven changes to policy and targeted training initiatives and establish benchmarks for progress. Four, institute a requirement for diversity, equity, and inclusion and implicit bias training for all city employees and officials, including the mayor's office, city council, Hoover City Schools, and the police and fire departments. Incorporate criteria related to diversity, equity, and inclusion into all departmental and employee evaluations. These action items are in alignment with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, Standards for Advanced Law Enforcement Education, and are based on International City-Council Managers Association Equity and Inclusion Toolkit.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Wang.
Council President Smith, I need the address, city, and zip.
All right. Before, we need that information before we start the clock, John, okay? Sharon Wang?
Can I get that for her, though? I don't have that.
We need.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
We need your, your name and the street you live on and your ZIP code if you live in Hoover.
Hold on. Council President Smith.
One second, please.
I need, I need the lady who just spoke. I need her address. Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Wang, if you, start the clock until you provided your personal information.
Okay, so I am a resident of Hoover. I live on, I live in White, or Whitestone Way. That is my street that I live on, and then my ZIP code is 35226. Is there any more information that I need to provide?
Your proper name for the clock.
Oh, my name is Sharon Wang.
All right, your three minutes has started.
Okay. Firstly, I demand Gene Smith to address and apologize for silencing residents from speaking their concerns rather than listening to what their concerns are fully and then answering. I demand that Frank Brocato and Nicholas Sturzes address the behavior of the police department. Hoover Police Department has been targeting organizers with warrants that are not necessary. There was a warrant out for a person who did not even live in Hoover anymore and was not even in the state of Alabama during the time in question. I would also like both Frank and Nicholas to address why his, why their police officers are wearing Blue Lives Matter face masks when they are not allowed to be using any political propaganda or wearing any political paraphernalia. I also demand that the body cam footage of E.J. Bradford be released, all charges dropped against every protester arrested in the past few months, and to tax cut the police and redistribute that money to educate our youth, social work, mental health, and affordable housing, so that every person who lives in the city of Hoover, Alabama, will truly be equal to each other.
Is that it, Ms. Wang?
Yes, sir, and I would absolutely love it if you were able to answer any of my demands.
Mr. Mayor, is anything you care to say? I don't believe so. We thank you for your time. Next, we have Kim Lee, a resident of Hoover. Ms. Lee, if you'd give us your full name, the street you live on, and your ZIP code, and then we'll start your three minutes.
Not on chat.
I'm sorry?
She's not on chat.
Okay, she's left. Next, we have Jessica Para. Ms. Para, if you please give us your full name, the street you live on, and your ZIP code. Okay, that's the last of the Hoover residents. Next, we have Phil Pomeroy.
Okay, so for Phil Pomeroy, he had asked that we read his statement. He is unable to speak on his chat, so I am actually going.
Is he, well?
Yeah, he's not a Hoover resident.
Well, this is, is he because he physically doesn't have a voice?
That is correct.
So, he cannot speak?
He cannot speak.
Go ahead and read his statement.
I want to make it a little bigger.
Start the clock.
Can I have his address, city?
He needs to, I tell you what.
His statement's actually pulled up.
Mr. Pomeroy, we need your full spelling of your name, the street you live on, and your ZIP code. We will come, we will come back to you. Now, let's go to Dan Walters. If you give us your complete name, the street you live on, the city you live in, and your ZIP code, and then we'll start your three minutes.
Yes, absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Daniel Walters. I live on Glenwood Avenue in Birmingham, and my ZIP code is 35222.
What is this avenue again?
Glenwood.
Glenwood, thank you. All right, start the clock.
I'm here tonight to once again ask the council for a response. This time, why does the council, specifically yourself, Mr. Smith, and the council at large, feel the need to silence the public by cutting off public comment like you did two weeks ago? See, public comment is based from the Latin phrase, vox populi, or voice of the people. Public comment is literally set aside at council meetings around the country to hear from the people that you serve. Yet two weeks ago, three of us were cut off, and then the meeting was abruptly ended. I understand Open Meetings Act and the city's stance on not allowing council to discuss certain matters that may have been brought up two weeks ago. I'm not an unreasonable person, but it does prevent, doesn't prevent the council from sitting and listening and hearing the community that they serve. All that was needed was you to sit there, listen to what we had to say, and then simply say, due to pending litigation, we have no comment. That's it. That's all it would have taken to end it. No comment, no comment the heck out of us. That would have been just fine. But no, we were cut off and we were, and I was actually told by one of the council members that certain trigger words, such as warrants, arrests, and evidence, end public comment. Again, if the council doesn't want to make a comment, then don't make a comment. But I refuse to think that this council wants to be seen by the public as people who suppress the voice of the people and infringe upon our First Amendment rights. So I pose the question again, why did the council feel the need to silence the public two weeks ago by cutting off public comment and not letting us speak?
I believe tonight's actions are in answer of that. Are you through, sir?
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I recognize that. I would have preferred that you had responded to something that the previous speaker had said, but I do recognize that, because I do think credit should be given where credit is due.
Are you through, sir?
I'm done.
Thank you. All right, did we get any information from Mr. Pomeroy?
I did. We did get some information from Mr. Pomeroy. If you'll hit it over, all right, and put the timer up, but.
We need it now, don't start the clock yet.
He is, he is from 3524, Winchase Drive. His ZIP code is, is 35242, is his ZIP code? He's from Winchase Drive.
And what city does he reside? Okay, start the clock. Read his statement.
Following the wrongful death of George Floyd and the ensuing protests all over the world, we must eliminate racism and hold our police accountable for the behavior on the job in our community of Hoover. I am writing in support of grassroots organizations like Hoover A-H-E-A-D to discover how we can make our community more welcoming to people of color. Will you take steps in implementing these action, these action items? Create a centralized public website that summarizes data related to issues of race, ethnicity, and gender, including traffic stops, tickets, arrests, school discipline, educational outcomes, city employment, and city contract awards. Hire a chief diversity officer who will oversee data request updates, implementation of citizens and city employee climate assessments, review of current city policies involving equity, equity and inclusion, and liaisons with civil groups and advisory boards. Create an equity and inclusion advisory board who will work with the chief diversity officer, mayor, city council, and Hoover City School Administration and Board to recommend data-driven changes to policy and targeted training incentives. Institute a requirement for diversity, equity, and inclusion and implicit bias training for all city employees and officials, including the mayor's office, city council, Hoover City Schools, and the police and fire departments. Incorporate criteria related to diversity, equity, and inclusion into all departmental and employee evaluations.
All right, that completes his statement. Is there anybody else online seeking recognition that has not already spoken? How many?
One.
And this person's name?
Catherine Coltrane.
Catherine Coltrane, an old neighbor. Ms. Coltrane?
Am I unmuted?
Is this Ms. Coltrane?
It is. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Name, street, city, and ZIP code, please.
Catherine Coltrane Avanti, Hoover 35226.
Thank you. Old neighbor of mine. Go ahead.
Yes, just a question, and you'll have to forgive me, as this is my first council meeting to attend. So I've heard the letter read, the letter that was signed by, I believe, maybe a couple hundred people, asking for some action. So my question to you and the council is, what do you do with that information besides saying thank you and next? Do you have a statement, or has someone already talked to you and you've given a statement as to what you guys will do, or won't do, or can't do? What happens next, Gene?
Well, people are allowed to speak, but there's no guarantee of a response.
Well.
Not to say there won't be one, it's just whether anybody cares to.
Wow.
But you are guaranteed, you are guaranteed to be able to speak.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate that in this society, in this community. But gentlemen of council, I would certainly hope that there would be some type of response if no other reason, because you're up for election. But I certainly know several of you to know that you would want to speak and address the community. So I guess there was not a timetable on the letter, but maybe there needs to be a follow-up letter, just to get a response of our council members to the community would be appropriate and appreciated.
Is that it?
Will you speak to this letter? Question mark.
Mr. President, can I?
Mr. Posey.
Ms. Coltrane, we had a conversation a few nights ago, myself, Councilman Murphy and Councilman Middlebrooks, and, what'd you say? And, and Mr. Rice.
And, and Mr. Rice with Hoover Head about this letter and about several of the items in it. And one of the things that we've got to do is we've got to do a lot of research on what we can provide, what we cannot provide. There's some things in there that, that blend over into the school system, blend over into things that police departments are not, around Alabama are not doing, that we've got to get legal advice on that. Second thing is the one item that, the one item that does apply to the council, that does apply to the budget, would be the hiring of this chief diversity officer. That's something that's gotta go through the budgetary process. So, what we discussed with Hoover Head of doing is waiting and delaying until we get closer to that budget and possibly closer into after the election, since new people are coming online to really sit down, break down these issues, and go in and formulate, you know, solutions to these problems, is what we talked about with them. They felt like that was a, that was a good idea. I won't speak for them. They felt like that was a good solution there, and that's kinda where we were with that. Now, you know, budget is going on, and the mayor's here, and then Allen's here, and of course, they hear the things that are, I guess, executive branch-related, and then the things that are legislative branch-related. But we've gotta sit down and look at that, get that together, and then come up with a solution. But it would be unfair right now to do that with so many seats up for, up for election, all of them and other people possibly coming into the fold here.
And I so appreciate that, and I'm sorry, could you tell me your name again?
Kurt Posey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Posey. Well, I appreciate that. I'm not a participant or a member of Hoover Ahead, but I do think it was worth a statement from the council at the council meeting. So, I appreciate your statement, and I do hope that as the process is continuing with, as you said, the budget, that this will be addressed. But, but more than anything, I appreciate your comment to the council, for the, to the community, for those of us that are not a part of Hoover Ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. And you say there's someone else? The name? Has not spoken yet? All right. Allison? Please give us your full name, the street you live on, the city you live in, and your ZIP code, please.
My name is Allison Diop from Pong. I live on Village Greenway in Hoover 35226.
Okay, if you could say your name again, I don't, I think we had some interference.
Okay, I'm trying to change where the computer is. My name is Allison Diop from Pong.
Okay, thank you.
Village Greenway in Hoover 35226.
Thank you. Your time is starting.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the council. I've had some email correspondence with some of the council members about the requested actions by Hoover Head to increase diversity and equity and inclusion in Hoover. And I would like to know, you know, as to the, you know, new staffing and hiring and kind of changes, why not now? Why not start now? Why not, you know, get the ball rolling? Bring people in who come in for election, or who might be new members of the council? I see no reason to wait. And I'd like to know who the chief diversity officer is in the city of Hoover, if there is one. And what do they do? And how can they be more visible in the city? How can you, as the city government, communicate to the city that this is important? That you want everyone to feel welcome in the city of Hoover, no matter what they look like or where they come from or who they love? I, you know, have lots of questions, and I appreciate, again, the chance to speak and address the council.
Okay, you still have over a minute if you have more questions.
I would, you know, I think really would, I guess what I'd like to see is in the future, maybe some presentations to the city or some way to get information out about what the city is doing. I haven't seen anything, like, it seems to me this would be something the city would want to publicize. You know, how, how is the city doing a good job? How is the school system doing a good job with this? Where can they improve? And I'll say, I am in one of the book clubs. I'm facilitating one of the book clubs with Hoover Ahead. And it's a great opportunity to engage on, engage my fellow residents on issues that we don't normally talk about. Because we can't imagine race away. We can't imagine the inequities and the problems that we have away. We can't ignore them and hope that they'll go away. We have to deal with them head-on.
Ma'am, your time has expired. I would say that any issues you have to do with our school board needs to be addressed to them. They are a body that are responsible to the State Board of Education, not to the city of Hoover. Is that it? All right. Anything else from the council? We're adjourned.